Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, September 27, 2011. We will start our meeting today with the flag salute led by Supervisor Holmes.
Our pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor. At this time, we will have the statement of meeting procedures read by our clerk, Mrs. Anne Holman.
Thank you. Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of September 27, 2011. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment. Persons may address the board on any item not on the agenda. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes since the time allotted for a public comment is 15 minutes. If all the public comments cannot be heard in the 15 minutes, we will take up additional public comment at the end of the regular session. The board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment, but if anyone would like to come forward, please do so.
Good morning. Terry Davis, on behalf of the board. At the last board meeting, there was an agenda item that I missed, but I took a real interest in and watched the discussion on video, and that was this idea of Roseville partnering with the PCCP and assuming responsibilities for urban development south of Placer Parkway, what I like to call the future study area. You know, I thought that this was a very brave proposal. I wasn't too surprised that there was some pushback on it. I want to say that we generally support directing urban growth to the cities. No disrespect to the county's planning process, but generally, cities are bound by the Lafco Reform Act that really drives contiguous development that we favor. The main point I want to make this morning is that perhaps the PCCP needs Roseville more than Roseville needs the PCCP. At the heart of all this are the 404 permits, as you know, that often take a very long time to get, sometimes three to five years. In terms of Roseville, I understand they're just getting Creekview and Sierra Vista soon. That's probably going to take care of their growth issues for a long time to come in this market. And one thing I think that needs to be, we need to remember, is that Roseville can always annex, even if they're not a partner in the PCCP, they can annex, if Lafco agrees, by the old method. And they can get their 404 permits through the Army Corps of Engineers and the Section 7 consultation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. They can do that without being a partner of the PCCP. And because of that, there's a real concern on our part, and I know on a part of the agencies as well, that in theory, Roseville could decide at some point in the future to just annex right through the future study area and even into the reserve acquisition area if they're not a partner of the PCCP. In addition, if they're getting their permits the old way, typically, it's very small onsite and offsite preserves that don't really have biological function over time and kind of undermine our regional conservation strategy. So, to the people who've been tracking on this, and I have for about 10 years on the Biological Working Group, Roseville is the wild card. You already have a number of concerns that the agencies have about the PCCP. You know, this was, would be one to really think about trying to take off the table. And I think for Roseville, you're going to need some incentives, and I'm really glad that this idea of where urban growth should be directed is being looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might just make it clear on one issue. Lafco doesn't have the sole authority to approve annexations. Placer County has to agree to the annexation, so just to make sure the listeners at home know that.
Thank you. That was going to be my clarification as well. Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comments and move on to Supervisors' Committee reports. Kirk? Just checking. Jack? Okay. I will report very briefly. We did have a meeting of the Placer County Economic Development Board at Kaiser Roseville, and we had a great turnout, had a presentation from the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, among others, and are looking forward to our Manufacturers' Forum later in October. I also had an opportunity to chair the final meeting of the U.S. Forest Service Resource Advisory Council, which hands out grants to applicants for the rural schools funding monies provided by the federal government. And it was my great pleasure to be part of the unanimous vote to allocate almost $50,000 to the Placer County proposal, which is the last chance biomass removal. So that was a terrific event. And then last, but certainly not least, got to participate, as I'm sure many of you did, in the Great American River Cleanup Day, went out, had a wonderful day in the canyon, actually with your brother, and Beth Gaines as well, and got to do both cleanup and then enjoyed a wonderful raft trip with the Protect American Canyons group. So that was just a wonderful day.
It's my understanding that Councilman Kong, who's from Sacramento, was there as well.
That is true. Yes, that's correct. All right. No other committee reports? All right, seeing none. Let's move on to the consent agenda at this point. All items on the consent agenda, items 11 through 19, have been recommended for approval by the County Executive Department. Just as a note, item 15B has been revised. That has been distributed to both the board, and it is available for the public at the back of the room. All items on the consent agenda will be approved by a single roll call vote, but anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and the item may be moved for public discussion. Is there anyone who would like to take anything off the consent agenda? All right, do I hear a motion?
Moveable. Second.
All right. This will be a roll call.
Holmes?
Aye.
Duran?
Yes.
Hewler?
Montgomery.
Yes. All right, we are right on time for our 910 presentation. This is a proclamation declaring October 2011 to be National Long Term Care Residents' Rights Month in Placer County. And if I could ask Geneva Carroll to come forward to the podium, please? Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. I'm going to read this, and then I will give you an opportunity to say some words, and then I understand you'd like some photos taken.
Yes, thanks.
That would be terrific. The proclamation reads, "In the matter of a proclamation declaring October 2011 as National Long Term Care Residents' Rights Month in Placer County, whereas in the county of Placer, State of California, there are more than 3,300 residents who reside in long-term care facilities, including 154 assisted living and 11 skilled nursing facilities, and whereas the Federal Nursing Home Reform Act of 1987 guarantees these residents their individual rights in order to promote and maintain their dignity and autonomy, and whereas the staff and volunteer state-certified long-term care ombudsmen respond to the residents' concerns and care issues, investigate complaints of abuse and neglect, monitor their facilities, and witness their advanced healthcare directives, and whereas the staff and volunteer state-certified long-term care ombudsmen observe the facility's implementation of the promotion of residents' rights and help ensure that the residents are aware of their rights so that they may be empowered to live with dignity and self-determination, and whereas it is important to honor and celebrate the long-term care residents, to recognize their rich individuality and reaffirm their rights as members of our constituency, members of the community, and major contributors to the quality of our lives. And whereas, National Long Term Care Residents' Right Month, which is celebrated during the month of October, was started by the National Consumer Voice to highlight the importance of resident-focused care, and whereas Ombudsman's Service of Northern California, a project of Legal Services of Northern California and Area Forest Agency on Aging, along with individuals and groups across the country, will celebrate Residents' Rights Month to emphasize the importance of affirming these rights through facility practices, public policy, and resident-centered decision-making that impacts their quality of care and quality of life. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Placer County Board of Supervisors does hereby declare October 2011 as National Long Term Care Residents' Rights Month in Placer County. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Should I say photos first or say something first?
I don't have much to say. I think that pretty much says it. I've... (laughing). Thank you very much for honoring the residents that live in Placer County. It means a lot to them, as you can see. So, thank you very much.
Do you want to have questions up here? Hi, Carol. I should come in here. Sorry.
Lots of people do that. Okay. Go ahead and go next to the neighbor there. Got it? Can you look at the cameras? Can you take her arms? Both of their arms?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Really is a pleasure. Thank you very much. Okay. Our 915 item, which we are about 15 seconds short on here, will be from the Sheriff's Department. We're going to be conducting a public hearing to review and approve the spending plan for fiscal year 2011-12 for the Sheriff, Coroner, Marshal, and District Attorney from the COPS Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund. The spending plans seek approval as follows. Frontline law enforcement, $127,532. Corrections, $143,002. And District Attorney, $80,654. And Jan Gage will be presenting.
Good morning, Chair, and members of the board. Janice Gage, Fiscal Manager with the Sheriff's Office. We are requesting your board conduct a public hearing this morning to review and approve the spending plan, as mentioned, for the fiscal year 1112 Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund. The appropriations comes from the Citizens Option for Public Safety or the COPS Fund, and there is funding in the State General Fund to provide for that. Revenues are distributed throughout the state on appropriated basis, and the state requires that these funds be used for frontline law enforcement. A portion of the funds goes to the District Attorney and also to the jail.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Jan before we open the public hearing? Okay, well now, open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve or any other discussion on this item?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Janice. All right. We will move on to our first department item. This will be an Administrative Services procurement item, authorizing the purchasing manager to sign the following. A blanket purchase order for radiology services, health and human services, community health, and clinics. We're being asked to approve the renewal of a negotiated blanket purchase order with Radiological Associates of Sacramento for radiology services in the maximum amount of $325,000. And today, we have Clark Moots presenting.
Good morning, Chair Montgomery, members of the board. Clark Moots, Director of Administrative Services. Item 5A is requesting your board's approval to renew blanket purchase order 18205 with Radiological Associates of Sacramento for radiology services in the maximum amount of $325,000, and authorize the purchasing manager to sign the resulting blanket purchase order. The Health and Human Services Managed Care Medically Intelligent Adult Program requires an annual contract for diagnostic radiology services when these services cannot be performed at county medical clinics. On September 28, 2010, your board approved this BPO in the maximum amount of $280,000 for the period of October 1, 2010 through September 30, 2011. HHS has requested the renewal of this BPO for another year in the maximum amount of $325,000 based on the anticipated caseload. Radiological Associates of Sacramento has agreed to renew this agreement for another year with no changes to contracted pricing structure, terms, or conditions. Upon your board's approval, the BPO will be issued for $325,000 for the period of October 1, 2011 through September 30, 2012. That's a correction to the item presented to you in writing there. Funding is available in the HHS fiscal year 2011-2012 budget for the first nine months and is anticipated to be included within the fiscal year 2012-2013 proposed budget for the remaining three months. Dr. Mark Starr is here and available for any program questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, just a quick question, Madam Chair. The original procurement of this particular vendor, was that through a proposal or a request for proposals, or how did that occur?
The original procurement on this was through a request-proposal process.
Okay, so it wasn't a bid, it was just looking for qualifications?
Qualifications, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Anyone from the audience want to make a comment or have any questions on this? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Moveable.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clark. We will now move to item 6 from the County Executive Office. It's requested that the Board of Supervisors, 1, approve the fiscal year 2011-12 final budget, including the following. Approve a resolution adopting fiscal year 2011-12 final budget for county operating funds for a total of $765,843,000, as shown on attachment A. And approve final budgets for county proprietary funds for a total of $72,023,000, as shown on attachment B. Approve the county master fixed asset list for fiscal year 2011-12, attachment C. And introduce an ordinance amending the personnel allocations of various departments to reflect position changes approved for the fiscal year 2011-12 final budgets, attachment D. Second, we're being asked to approve a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2011-12 final budgets for special districts governed by the Board of Supervisors in the amount of $43,968,609 in attachment E. And presenting today is Graham Canous.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Graham Canous, the Finance and Budget Operations Manager, and the purpose you just very clearly articulated, so I won't go over that again, except to say that this will be the final adoption of the 1112 budget after a very comprehensive and open process that you have held throughout this year. This is the 17th budget-related discussion that your board has had since January. The overall state of the county, as has been discussed, county remains financially healthy in light of the economic downturn and the challenges over the course of the past few years. Certainly, challenges remain. This is, it's not all cake and cookies, as we have talked about, and there are remaining risks relative to the economy. However, due to your board's continued proactive decision-making, the county has additional flexibility and greater margin relative to the 2011-12 budget than has been the case over the course of the past few years. Recent context, the county population certainly has grown significantly over the course of the past 10 years. As we have discussed, that growth has tapered off somewhat on the population side. Revenue growth as well from a per capita basis has gone down. In fact, it's gone down nearly 8% just since 2007/8. From an expenditure standpoint, per capita, as adjusted by inflation since Proposition 13, expenditures have gone down $5 per capita over that period of time. And it is the county financial policies and your board's approach over the court, actually going all the way back to 2003 with those original county financial policies, that has really kept the county financially healthy, particularly relative to others and in the context of the economy. There have been a number of actions that your board has taken, things that have been put in place relative to a hiring freeze since 2007, labor adjustments, certainly reprioritization of limited resources to core services to ensure maximum sustainable service levels within the county. And through that, and through operational efficiencies and identifying and expanding alternative service deliveries, and our, what I would describe as our fantastic staff here in Placer County, we have largely maintained service levels. The assessment roll shows a very clear picture in terms of what's been happening. Going all the way back to 2001, there were year-over-year healthy increases in our overall assessment roll. That has actually changed over the course of, since 2008, and the assessment roll is declining in 2011-12 by about 3%, which is certainly no good news, except that it's at least not as bad as it was the year before. And I should note that if you look at the overall assessment roll at $51.5 million, excuse me, $51.5 billion in terms of the value of the assessment roll, that's a hair under where it was back in 2006. So we're kind of standing where we were five years ago relative to the overall value of the assessment roll, which is likely what a lot of folks are experiencing in their own homes relative to their... Excuse me. So, the overall final budget for your consideration today shows an $8 million increase year-over-year. I would note that due to a technical accounting change related to the budgeting of realignment revenues, that the effective change in the year-over-year budget is $8.4 million lower, a bit over 1% of a decline. If we look back to 2007/8, the budget is effectively $43 million lower, and if we look at our high point in the final budget of 2008/9, we are 13% below that amount, or about $116 million lower than we were at that peak. Looking at the major fund areas, the General Fund is going up year-over-year. Again, that's a function of the technical accounting change related to realignment. Also, your board's action to set dollars aside in the General Fund Reserve, nearly $5 million for 2011-12. Public Safety Fund includes both the public safety realignment-related dollars and also increases in the public safety sales tax. Capital Projects Fund and Public Ways and Means, or excuse me, Public Ways and Facilities Funds, I was flashing back to the capital for a moment there. Public Ways and Facilities Fund or the Road Fund have significant changes, one going down dramatically, one going up dramatically year-over-year, which is just a function of the timing of capital projects and road infrastructure-related projects. Here, you can see how we break down in terms of a fund perspective in this county. Nearly half of all the, of our total budget comes from the General Fund. That's where the support comes for a number of the other services from a public safety standpoint, capital projects, and others. And when we look at how we package what we do from a service standpoint, salaries and benefits, funding our staff at the $275 million, that's our largest category, we have capital construction, and the debt service, which includes both capital projects and the Road Fund as the next tier, and then services and supplies at about $100-plus million. The General Fund Reserve, as I mentioned, does go up year-over-year, which puts us where we were, almost where we were back in 2008/9. So we're ahead of where we've been over the past few years. Key changes, there are, here it shows both expenditure and revenue increases. If we adjust for the technical accounting change, there are actually year-over-year declines on both the expenditure side and the revenue side. And funded positions decreased by 62 year-over-year in the budget. That's throughout the whole countywide budget, and a significant portion of those are occurring in the General Fund, which has more limited resources than some of our other fund areas. The adjustments to proposed budget remain, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, relative to the budget. They're also outlined in the agenda packet. I won't detail through all these. I'll just note that mostly what you'll see is increases to reserves where there was additional dollars at the end of the year, and some prioritized spending where needed relative to timing of projects. So, in terms of where we're going and what we're doing, there is this changing state-county relationship relative to realignment, also the redevelopment-related proposal that is currently stuck in the courts. There are potential mid-year trigger cuts that could impact the county to the tune of $1 million. The economy remains struggling with high unemployment. The sales tax has actually been creeping up over the course of the last nine months, so that's some positive news, but there have been some challenges with the volatility of the overall state revenue base that remains a risk for us here in the county. And real estate, we've talked about, it's still struggling. There was some data that was released just over the course of the past couple of days highlighting that there may be as many as 14% of all homes in the Sacramento, larger, greater Sacramento region, which includes our county, that are in some point in the process related to foreclosure. Sort of a scary thought to think about, and not one, I think, that would cross most folks' minds if you flash back just a few years ago. There remain a lot of federal and state uncertainty, creating some level of choppy waters as we look forward into 1213 and beyond, particularly as it relates to the state and how that might play out. So, we know we're moving somewhere, but it's not exactly clear relative to what may be happening with the federal and state programs and funding. So, today, I stand before you to request your approval related to the 1112 final budget, and that includes a few different pieces. Certainly, the final budget resolution for county operating funds, that's $765.8 million for this fiscal year. The final budget related to the county proprietary funds, which largely includes the internal service funds within the county, at $72-plus million. Approval of the county master fixed asset list for the year, and the allocation ordinance for position allocations. That decreases overall, with three allocations decreased from 2010-11 to 1112. And then finally, the resolution related to the special district budgets that are governed by your board. And with that, I would turn it back over to you and request your action. I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Jack?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. I want to direct your attention to attachment B, proprietary funds. And I noticed that there is a proposed budget of $47,356,627 on internal service, and a final budget of $50,728,727, with a change of $3,372,100. I just kind of want to know the quick and dirty on how that fits into the overall budget scheme. Are we increasing budgets? And if we did, where's the $3 million coming from?
So, some of those are related to dollars that were not spent in 1011 on specific projects that would roll into 1112. There are other pieces of those that relate to what the actual cost would be, so those numbers may be updated between the proposed budget and the final when we have...
I just kind of want to know the quick and dirty on how that fits into the overall budget scheme. Are we increasing budgets? And if we did, where's the $3 million coming from?
So some of those are related to dollars that were not spent in 1011 on specific projects that would roll into 1112. There are other pieces of those that relate to what the actual cost would be. So those numbers may be updated between the proposed budget and the final, when we have more up-to-date information related to what those costs might be. So there's elements of that that fold into this. And to the, so it primarily fits into those two categories, where to the extent that there is specific project-related funding that rolls from one year to the next, or an update related to what a countywide cost might be between the proposed budget and the final budget.
So is it safe to say this is part of fund balance that's rolling over here?
In terms of the change from the proposed budget to the final?
Yes.
In large part, yes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of our departments for the hard work they've done to come to this $765 million budget. County Executive Office, all of our department heads, including the elected department heads, they've done a tremendous job in, you know, bringing us to this point. This is a 17th board discussion, doesn't include all the meetings that we've had individually with staff about what's going on. As I go throughout the county and through some regional meetings, people come up and ask, "How's Placer County doing?" It's very refreshing to be able to say that our proposed budget was $720 million and our final budget was $765 million, and that we also put some $5.5 million back into our general fund reserves. That is really a positive message, and it's very easy to go out and talk to the community about that. So again, I just want to thank CEO's office, this board, and all the departments that helped us with this process. Thank you.
Yeah, I would very much like to echo Jim's words and thank the CEO's office, and thank you particularly because you've done an outstanding job of sitting down with me and going through these things, not just in the 17 meetings we've held, but in a number of one-on-one meetings, to just further clarify and explain both the process and the detail level. This has not been an easy process. None of these budgets have for the last couple of years. I don't expect any of them will be easy in the coming years. I long for the days when Placer County was flush, but that's just not where we find ourselves now. One of the things that I have mentioned in many of these meetings leading up to today is the fact that we have largely met the level of service that our constituents and the residents of Placer County expect from us. But I do think we are going to need to work very diligently over the next year to identify specific positions that need to be filled, that are currently funded but unfilled, that need to be filled, so that we can continue to meet the expectations of the residents of Placer County. And I know that we can all work together to make that happen, both at the department level, at the CEO's office, and those of us on the board. And I think it's just really critical that we focus on that. I'd like to open this up to the public. If there's any questions, comments, or any input that anyone would like to have, please feel free to come forward. All right, seeing none. Do I have a?
Madam Chair, move approval of the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have something?
Nope.
Okay.
Move approval of the resolution adopting fiscal year 1112 final budgets. And then I'll continue on down the list after, one at a time on these. So I'll move approval of the resolution adopting the final budget for 1112.
Okay. This is a roll call. Is there any additional discussion before we have a roll call? Okay, Mrs. Holman?
Euler?
Aye.
Duran?
Yes.
Holmes?
I can't.
Yes.
And I would move approval of the county proprietary funds budget in our packet as attachment B.
May we have a roll call?
Euler?
Aye.
Duran?
Yes.
Holmes?
Aye.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Move approval of county master fixed asset list for 1112 as attachment C.
Roll call?
Euler?
Aye.
Duran?
Yes.
Holmes?
Montgomery?
Yes.
And move approval of the ordinance amending personnel allocations for various departments reflect position changes approved in the 1112 final budget. Also, attachment D.
Roll call?
Euler?
Aye.
Duran?
Yes.
Holmes?
Montgomery?
Yes.
And finally, approve resolution adopting 1112 final budgets for our special districts governed by the board as attachment E.
Roll call?
Euler?
Aye.
Duran?
Yes.
Holmes?
Montgomery?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we're going to move to our 9:30 timed item. This is a presentation from the District Attorney's Office, presentation for the Prosecutor of the Year Award to the recipient, Jeffrey Wilson, and our District Attorney, Mr. Scott Owens, will be presenting today.
Supervisor Montgomery, members of the board. This is a good day for us. We get to recognize one of our own. And I am honored to, get my glasses on before I get started here. It just gets worse every year. I am honored to announce that the 2010 Prosecutor of the Year recipient is Assistant District Attorney Jeff Wilson. The District Attorney's Office established the annual Prosecutor of the Year Award in memory of Anne Marie Bourgeois, a Placer County Deputy District Attorney who died during a tragic fire in her home in 1994. Each Deputy District Attorney in our office is given an opportunity to vote for the colleague whom they feel should be honored. The recipient is chosen for his or her display of outstanding effort, excellence, and courage in prosecuting cases. I'd like to tell you a little bit more about Jeff Wilson. Mr. Wilson has a Bachelor of Arts degree in political studies from Pitzer College, Claremont, California. He obtained his Juris Doctorate degree and certificate of governmental affairs at the University of Pacific, McGeorge School of Law, Sacramento in 1997. Jeff has been employed with our District Attorney's Office for over 13 years. His duties and responsibilities have included the investigation and prosecution of complex and high-profile criminal cases. Jeff has also supervised the training of some of our newer attorneys and our interns. He was promoted to the position of Chief Deputy District Attorney, Assistant District Attorney on January 1, 2011, and he currently oversees the day-to-day functioning of our office, in addition to handling homicides and other important cases. Mr. Wilson successfully prosecuted a man for attempted murder in 2010, David Allen Virgo, 46 years old, a parolee, living in Applegate, and at a time wanted on felony assault charges and considered armed and dangerous. In October of 2006, the Placer County Sheriff's Office learned of Virgo's location and determined that attempting an arrest of Mr. Virgo could result, could create a serious risk to the public and their officers. A decision was made to contact the Placer County Special Enforcement Team to detain and arrest Virgo. When the set team attempted to make contact with Virgo, the parolee opened up, opened fire with them on two, with two handguns. Ultimately, after a standoff had ensued, the set team was able to arrest Mr. Virgo without injury to themselves or the citizens. Virgo was convicted by jury trial in September 2010 on 21 felony counts, which included 10 charges of attempted murder. Virgo was sentenced to 121 years to life in state prison. Another important case successfully prosecuted by Mr. Wilson in 2009 was Paul Heinz, a 24-year-old Rockland resident who, while on campus at Sierra College, stabbed a former friend several times in the abdomen in a fit of jealous rage because the friend had begun a relationship with a woman who he had previously gone out with. Heinz was convicted by jury trial for attempted murder and was sentenced on September 30, 2010. When word of who had won the award got out, I received this email from Captain Jeff Osnow from the Placer County Sheriff's Department, and he asked that I relay it to you. "This is certainly a well-deserved recognition for Jeff Wilson. For many years now, I have had the pleasure of knowing and working with Jeff. He is well-known throughout our department as a great attorney who gets the job done right. He has always taken the time to talk with involved officers in a case and gets them involved in the preparation of the prosecution. The genuine, his genuineness, along with his fantastic sense of humor, have always been appreciated. Please pass on my congratulations for this award." Once again, that was from Placer County Sheriff's Deputy Captain Jeff Osnow. "I can't tell you what a relief it is for me personally to have Jeff as my Assistant District Attorney. His vision, his ability to communicate, and his legal skills are of great value to our office, and our community is a safer place because of Jeff Wilson."
Thank you all very much. Members of the board, thank you for giving us this time here, and thank you for allowing me to serve the citizens of Placer County. Thank you to Brad Finocchio and to Scott Owens for allowing me to prosecute these cases. And thank you to my wife and sons for tolerating me while I was doing these. I am truly honored by this award that my colleagues have given me, many of them who are here today. If you talk to them, they will probably tell you I'm not a fan of individual awards. The reason I'm not is because I consider this to be my job, and this is what you pay me for. The second reason is prosecutor, the role I play in prosecuting cases is a small one. It is a team effort that requires a lot of skill by a lot of different people, and a lot of heart, and a lot of passion. And those were exhibited in these cases. I sort of see myself as more the legal mouthpiece and event planner of the prosecution, but I am, again, just a small part. For example, with every prosecution comes strong victims and brave witnesses that come forward. That was truly the case here. Captain Osnow that you heard from, and Lieutenant Wayne Wu, who I believe is here today, and the set team of Placer County went after Mr. Virgo to arrest him. They were shot at, they put their life at risk, and got Mr. Virgo arrested and in custody with no harm to anybody. I did not do that. In the Sierra College case, three students from Sierra College came to the aid of a young man they didn't even know, and put their life at risk to save his. I didn't do that. With every successful prosecution, you have a successful investigation, and that certainly was the case here. The investigators from Placer County Sheriff's Department, led by Detective Bill Summers, did a spectacular job and supported me throughout this trial and was there for me, sat next to me every day of this trial. The same can be said of the Rockland Police Department detectives who quickly and efficiently brought Mr. Heinz to justice as well. With our, in our office, we have a list of titles. We have legal secretaries, we have victims' advocates, we have investigators. Those titles do not do these people justice. Their passion that they have for their job is equal, if not greater than mine, and they work hard every day to seek the same outcomes that we do. Without those people, these prosecutions do not happen, and they are not successful. And to my colleagues, I'd like to thank them for honoring me with this award, for being there every day. When you had a bad day at trial, when you have a good day, they're right there to talk about it and support you. Anything you need, all you have to do is pick up the phone. You never hear, "That's not my case." They get in there and they help you, and they're supportive of me and of each other every day at our office. In particular, in my career, there's been individuals that have been of great support and help to me through my 13-plus years here. When I walked in the door, Ted Peterson was my supervisor and has been a friend and a mentor ever since, and has served this county for 26 years as a prosecutor. Along with Mr. Peterson, when I was promoted to a felony team many years ago, I had the pleasure of meeting Bill Markey, who spent a lot of time teaching me how to prosecute felony cases and imparting upon me the wisdom he had learned through his time at this county. Now, since I've been promoted to Assistant District Attorney, I have the privilege of looking in people's personnel files and finding out certain information, like the fact that tomorrow will be Mr. Markey's 30th anniversary serving the citizens of Placer County. So to all my colleagues, I am very honored by this award, and I accept and recognize of my small part, the small part I play in bringing people like Mr. Virgo and Mr. Heinz to justice. Thank you.
Mr. Markey, I just wanted to let you know, tomorrow is my 20th wedding anniversary. So you and I apparently share something in common, but it's not a spouse. So I wanted to take this opportunity, I don't see any of my fellow supervisor slides here, to thank you very much for your service. I followed both these cases in the paper, the Virgo and the Heinz cases, and I think you did just an outstanding job in prosecuting those. I don't think I've ever heard a prosecutor called an event planner, but I will bear that in mind when I need my dance card filled. So thank you very much for all you've done for Placer County and just for the constituents of our great state.
You're welcome.
You bet. Okay. It being 9:45, we will move on next to item seven on the agenda, Facility Services Tahoe Customs House Tenant Improvements, project number 4861, presented by Joel Swift.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, Joel Swift, I'm Deputy Director here at Facility Services. With me today as well, Doug Hock, our architect and project manager on the project. And the request before your board today, oh, I need to make one brief correction. The dollar amount listed on the agenda does not match the number on your actual item. The correct value is the number on the item, which we'll get to. Again, it is recommended that your board approve this job order for the Tahoe Customs House Ten Improvements, which is project number 4861, to Riverview Construction Incorporated, and approve a resolution authorizing the director of Facility Services, who is designated to execute the job order in the amount of $605,191.93. And also to delegate authority to approve any supplemental job orders consistent with the county purchasing manual in section 20142 of the Public Contract Code. As a matter of background, on December 14 of 2010, your board awarded Job Order Contract to Riverview Construction in the amount not to exceed of $1 million for a variety of construction tasks at various county locations. The contract is based upon a published contract, construction task catalog containing a series of construction tasks with preset unit costs. All these unit costs are based on local labor at prevailing wages, material and equipment prices. Riverview bid and adjustment factor as well to account for variables, including performing the work for general facilities, as well as east side of Donner Summit. Your board also authorized, at that time, the director of Facility Services to execute job orders up to the amount of $250,000, and this item, of course, is above that amount. Stepping forward, in April of this year, April 12 of this year, your board authorized staff to enter into a professional services agreement with Williams &amp; Patton Architects and planners to perform the architectural and engineering design services for the Tahoe Customs House Tenant Improvement Project. This project consists of 6,687 square feet of tenant improvements to the first floor of the Customs House building at 775 North Lake Tahoe, North Lake Boulevard in Tahoe City. This design accommodates the Tahoe staff of Community Development Resources Agency, as well as Environmental Health Division of Health andahan Services. The design takes advantage of the configuration of the building. It's essentially a smaller version of the Auburn CDRC building with a focus on a flexible public lobby, public counter, and improved conference spaces for that area. The drawings and specifications are now completed, and they were given to the contractor for pricing. The final construction cost was based on quantities of construction tasks from that catalog, and our staff has reviewed the quantities used as a basis for the price estimate and determined the proposal to complete and responsive. The estimated total project cost is $1,300,000, including $800,000 for construction, $500,000 for design, project management, and all the other non-construction costs. There are sufficient funds appropriated in the capital projects fund to complete all of this work. And the departments are scheduled to move early next spring. And as I mentioned, Doug is here. He's not only our architect, kind of lead on this project, but he was also, we're fortunate that he was a lead on the original CDRC building. So through his leadership, we really have a really good project. And a third thing, he's also the lead in bringing our job order contracting to, forward as a delivery method. I just want to take a minute on that, because when we brought this forward to your board, we promised we'd come back and give you some updates on how that is going, since this is a new delivery method for us. That, again, was awarded 10 months ago as a competitive alternate to design, bid, and build. And although this particular award is our largest single job order to date, we have presently six projects in construction or completed using the two different contractors to a total dollar amount of roughly $1 million. One example is the building right next door, the two-story administrative building, which we are doing, completing the window upgrades and painting and cleaning the exterior of that building. So in a couple of months, we'll really get a good example of how that's going. It's still in its first year of this contracting method. We would plan to return to your board at the end of this year to do another annual contract. Per, this, Public Contract Code, it's a one-year limitation, but it does seem to be a very viable delivery method. It saves a lot of time, and it is another tool in our tool belt in terms of delivering projects. So again, in order to proceed with the Customs House Ten Improvement, it is requested your board award the job order to Riverview Construction and approve the attached resolution. Staff would be happy to answer any questions that your board might have on this.
Yeah, just a very, very good presentation. Just, again, the delivery method, you kind of ran through that a little bit.
Sure.
The?
A little bit more on it?
No, just the, what you call it.
Job order contracting.
Okay, thank you.
And again, it's a delivery method that essentially, we award a contract to the general contractor to a limited amount based on a catalog, and then essentially we issue job orders instead of change orders to that contract.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joel. I wonder, I don't see it in here, but Riverview Construction, do you know where they're based? I wonder, I don't see it in here, but Riverview Construction, do you know where they're based?
West Sacramento.
West Sacramento, okay. I was hoping they were a Placer County entity, but sadly not. Anyone in the audience want to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item eight. This is three items from Health and Human, I'm sorry.
Me and I just do that.
Okay, you two are just playing with each other, that's fine. Three items from Health and Human Services. The first two will be presented by Maureen Bowman, and the third will be presented by Richard Connect.
Good morning, Mrs. Chairman, women and members of the board. Maureen Bowman with the Adult System of Care. This morning, I am requesting you to approve the second and final contract with the California Forensic Medical Group for inmate healthcare services for a period of one year from October 2011 through September 30th through 2012. This is for a new annual base amount of a little over 3 million, of approximately $3,500,000, plus a per diem of $4.34 per inmate per day in excess of persons over 540. Also here today are representatives of George Mailham from Sheriff's Department, in case you would have questions at a different level of detail than I can answer. Inmate healthcare services are mandated for Placer County jail and juvenile detention, detainees, and they include primary medical care, dental, pharmaceuticals, mental health, acute hospital care, and specialty care to all inmates and wards held in the Placer County facilities. The current contract provides for the option to attend these services for two additional years, and this is the second of those two extensions that was negotiated in the original contract. CFMG has been a longtime high-performing contractor in Placer County, as evidenced by its ability to, in running the program, their success in obtaining and retaining institution for medical quality certification for the jail. These services are provided more cost-effectively through privatization than a county-run program. Risk management concurs that CFMG has reduced the county's liability through its staffing practices, adherence to the IMQ medical protocols, and ability to mitigate lawsuits against Placer County. The amended contract will remain at the same level as the prior year, which provides for a base population of 540 adult inmates and juvenile wards, but has the capacity for expansion to the total capacity of the two institutions, which is 595 inmates and wards, and we use the per diem charges in that case. And the reason we do that is because we want to make sure that we're never paying for services for somebody not in the facility, so we have a low threshold, so we make sure we are maximizing our dollars. There's no changes that were made to the staffing levels or the negotiated cost structure. This amendment is supported by the sheriff in probation. It has been reviewed and approved by county council, risk management, and the CEO. The amended contract with CFMG for inmates and detainees, detainee medical services includes an annual base rate of $3,477, plus the per diem rate of up to $87,000, and that would be if we had per diem at that capacity for the full year. The rate increase for the extension, per the contract, was limited to the most recent annual adjustment in the Medical Care Consumer Price Index. That turned out to be 2.9%, and that was according with the terms of the original contract. It's fully funded, the contract amendment, through the Public Safety Fund. Funding will be $2,607,687,000, is included in the Sheriff and Probations Department for 1112, that part of it, and the remainder will be in the 1213 base budgets for these two departments. So, with that, I would recommend approval, but would be happy to answer any questions.
I see no questions from the board.
Actually, I have one.
There you go. Jack?
Yeah, very nice presentation here. I noticed that under background, second paragraph, and I'm just going to read this, the services basically have been reduced and made more cost-effective by some risk management changes and adherence to IMQ medical protocols, and the ability to mitigate lawsuits filed against the county. Is there an auditing process that your department handles to make sure that those medical protocols are followed?
There is actually a certification process that keeps the medical protocols in place that's outside of our department. It's a state process that takes place on a regular schedule, and so they are renewed on a, on a regular schedule, so that they are, somebody comes in and checks all their practices, their training protocols, all of that stuff, and updates them. So, it's not a certification that just is forever, it has to be applied for on a schedule.
Annually?
I don't think it's annually. I think it's biannual.
Biannual? Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone from the audience care to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, second item, also, Maureen.
Yes, the second item I have for you this morning is a request to approve an amendment with the Turning Point Contract, who provide programs such as the Assertive Community Treatment for clients with serious mental illness, increasing total compensation of by $439,000 for revised aggregate amount of a little over $3 million, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign subsequent amendments not to exceed $49,000. The Adult System of Care is responsible for providing the appropriate level of mental health care for county residents by the most cost-effective means, including contracted services with organizations such as Turning Point. Turning Point Committee Programs has provided acute stabilization, mental health services for adults transitioning from inpatient hospitalization since June of 2008 as a result of a competitive proposal process. This program includes intensive outpatient treatment to assist individuals who are both involved with the criminal justice system, as well as those with serious risks of institutional placements or who are in institutions. During the 1011 year, services were provided to 107 individuals, and they reduced institutional care costs by providing services out of institutions, wrapping services around these people by $500,000 were saved in our system. Exceptional outcomes for individual clients have been produced by this great organization. Just to identify some, the number of days of the individuals that were seen was reduced by 86%. The number of days psychiatrically hospitalized, the number of days they were incarcerated reduced 90%, and the number of days they were homeless was reduced by 96%. Over the last year, services were expanded, include mental health clients at the county medical clinic and clients from the Kirby Hills outpatient clinic. This amendment, Turning Point, provides intensive wraparound services to 25 additional clients to target areas, those who are both older adults and those who are homeless, and also increases medication and services supports at our Kirby Hills clinic. The amendment was reviewed and approved, recommended by the Mental Health Alcohol and Drug Board last night at the regular meeting on August 23rd. The contract amendment is included in the apartment's 1112 final budget and is primarily funded by state and federal mental health revenue, 85%, $372,000 is state and federal revenue, and a required county general fund match of $67,000, which is included in the budget. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and recommend approval of the amendment.
I see no questions from the board. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. We'll move on to Richard.
Good morning, Richard Connect, Children's System of Care Director. The State Department of Mental Health block grant has, since 1994, funded a variety of mental health services in Placer County for both adults and children. In the last full year of completion, nearly 300 residents were assisted with housing and related support services, counseling and case management services, which provide a level of independence, which helps avoid hospitalization in other institutional settings. These services help foster a level of independence free from historic government-run programs, and of course, the stigma and costs associated with those programs. This year's allocation from the state is $686,330. No county general fund is required, and we would urge your approval. We'd be happy to take any questions.
I see none from the board. Anyone in the public want to comment on this? Seeing none, I'll have a motion. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item nine, Treasurer-Tax Collector Dry Creek CFD 2001-1 Bonds, being presented by Janine Windasshausen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Today, you have before you four action items related to the refunding or refinancing of Dry Creek CFD Community Facility District Bonds. Let me say right up front that there is no direct fiscal impact to the county and that this refinancing is done for the benefit of the property owners. To just recap, the four action items, you need to approve the form of certain agreements. They're not in final form, they're still a work in progress. Staff continues to review and update those documents. They are the Fiscal Agent Agreement, the ESCRO Agreement, the Bond Purchase Agreement, the Preliminary Official Statement, and the Continuing Disclosure Certificate, allowing for the refunding of the bonds in an amount not to exceed $15 million, at a net interest cost not to exceed 5.75. There's a typo in your memo, the resolution is correct, there's a transposition in the memo, and the sale of the bonds to the underwriter. Also authorizing and directing the treasurer tax collector to deliver the bonds and the executed agreements, and also authorizing any and all county officers to do everything that's necessary in order to consummate the sale of the bonds. And then the last action item is to designate Quinton Timig as the bond counsel, Jones Hall as the disclosure counsel, and Capital Public Finance as the financial advisor. These bonds were originally issued in 2001 in the amount of $20 million. The current amount outstanding is just over $15.4 million, and the maturity date is 2026. The maturity date would not be extended through this refunding, and the current interest rate is approximately 6.4%. These bonds were issued to pay for infrastructure in the development of the Dry Creek West Placer CFD area. It included sewer, water, drainage, park improvements, roadway, traffic, and improvements for the fire district. All of this, all the repayment for the bonds is, the debt service is obtained by collecting the amount on the property tax bills through a special tax that's applied to each of the parcels out there. There are a number of circumstances that allow us to undertake this refunding at this point. One is favorable interest rates. We expect to be able to issue in approximately the amount of 4.95% as compared to the 6.4 that's outstanding right now. The original tax formula was designed to ensure, of course, adequate collection for debt service. As a result of that, we have collected about $1.7 million since these were first issued in excess of what we need to pay the debt service and maintain reserves. Now, had we not been going through this refunding, then we would be calling bonds right now in order to shorten the amount of time that the property owners would have to pay off the bonds. But instead, we're making it a part of this transaction and paying down additional principal. And then the other thing is because this is, property is now developed and it has a track record, we're going to attempt to obtain a rating from one of the rating agencies, either Standard and Poor's and Moody's, and that will also help to get a more favorable interest rate. So, as far as the residential property owners, which the bulk of the property out there has been developed and it is residential, there are two tiers of special tax out there, and on the lower tier, the anticipated savings is about $220 a year for the remaining period to maturity out to 2026, and for the higher tier, it's estimated to be about $270 a So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about the specific agreements. We anticipate selling the bonds on October 18th and closing the transaction on November 1st, and because property tax bills are already out, it will, the reduction will end up on next year's property tax bills. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer your questions.
Supervisor Duran?
Yes, very, very well done, Janine, and I know that when you brought this, we kind of talked to me a little bit about it a couple weeks ago. It was a maybe, you might be able to do it, and I'm really excited for the homeowners out there that you were actually able to pull this off. It's very significant in the sense that during these really bad economic times, government is actually working to try to find some relief for taxpayers. And just to kind of quantify some of the numbers here, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking 900 residents in both the Morgan Creek and Doyle Ranch community, right?
Right, right. 900 properties will be affected.
They're going to, on average, receive, you know, possibly about around $200 in relief, maybe more.
Yeah, 200 to 300.
Which translates on a yearly basis to $180,000 a year, right? The 900, I mean, we're...
No, no, it's, that's per year, so not per installment.
Per installment, right. It's a fairly significant amount of money.
It is, it is over time, yes. It absolutely is.
The most important thing here is that it's not costing the county anything to do. It's all being taken care of with the existing bond funds, and all of the terms and conditions of the existing bonds remain in place, correct?
Yes, yes.
Good work, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? All right, seeing none, anyone in the public like to comment on this item? Janine, I'd just like to thank you for your work on this. I think, looking at taking an interest rate from 6.4% down to somewhere right around five is a pretty, pretty impressive drop, and thank you for everything you do. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Yeah, I guess I'll take these down one by one. Item number one, approving the various agreements and forms and allowing for the issuance of refunding bonds in an amount not to exceed $15 million, and the refunding of the outstanding Dry Creek West Placer CFD 2001-1 bonds, provided that the new bonds do not have a net interest cost in excess of 5.57%, and authorizing the sale of the bonds to the underwriter.
And just as a correction, I think that was 5.75.
That's right, because my memo was wrong, the resolution was correct.
Thank you.
Great.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item two, authorizing and directing the treasurer tax collector to execute and deliver the bonds and related documents.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item three, authorizing and directing agents and officers of the county to do any and all things and to take any and all actions and execute any and all documents that they deem necessary to issue the new bonds and refund the prior bonds, including the purchase of bond insurance that may be deemed necessary or advisable, and approving, confirming, and ratifying all actions taken to date by officers and agents of the county related to the issuance of the new bonds and of the refunding, refunding of prior bonds.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item four, designating Quinton and Thimming LLP as bond counsel, Jones Hall as disclosure counsel, Capital Public Finance Group LLC as financial advisor, and authorizing the county executive to execute agreements for their legal and financial services with payment contingent on the issuing of the issuance of the bonds.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And just as a final note, I will report back the results of the sale, and if the results of the sale do not meet the conditions here and do not create a savings for the property owners, then we don't consummate, so.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
And just another question, you will be reviewing the bonding documents moving forward into the...
Absolutely. No, it's an iterative process. We're working with the three outside advisors and county council and the CEO's office to make sure that all the information is correct and accurate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next timed item is not until 10:30, so at this point, we will be adjourning to closed session. Tony, did you want to give a brief rundown of what we'll be addressing?
Yes, taking up the items on page three, item number 10, there's several pieces of litigation listed there, A through E. I would note, item F, County of Sonoma versus Federal Housing Finance Authority, we will not be discussing, there's no need to discuss it. On page four, item B, Conference with Real Property Negotiator, and if there's time, and I don't know that we'll have time to do all these things, there's Labor Discussions also. We'll be back at 10:30.
Thank you.
You have 10 seconds, and then we'll leave.
Great. You're on.
The board has returned from closed session. On page four, regarding labor negotiations, there was no discussion of labor negotiations, and there will be none today. With regards to item B, conference with real property negotiator, the board received a report from the facility services team that's negotiating... from the Facility Services Team that's negotiating behalf of the county with the town of Loomis and gave directions to that team. Under litigation, the Board has gotten partially through their list and will graciously return to talk to me further after this portion of the agenda. But under the Sierra Club, the Board received a report from council and gave direction. Under item D, Jose Palermo versus Hunter Perez, the Board authorized the County Council's office to acknowledge a waiver of potential conflict with the firm of Porter Scott. And the rest of the litigation will be taken up after the close of the next agenda item. That closes this report.
Thank you. We will now move on to our 10:30 timed item. The County Executive Office has asked Placer County Water Agency to give us a presentation on the California Water Challenges. Ina Ramesh presenting. Welcome.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, Madam Chair, members of the Board. We've got -- this is part of an effort that has come out of the Regional Water Authority. We're members, and most of the other water purveyors in the Sacramento region are members, to try to educate opinion leaders, frankly, and to get some grassroots conversation going. The end game is hopefully to influence state-elected officials as to the inequity of some of the things that are happening on statewide scale. So with that, we'll run through this. It's helpful to remember that we are the area of origin for most of California's water supply. We've got, you know, clear mountain lakes, we've got clear streams, historic delivery facilities. I just threw in some nice pictures. But this is -- this one is neat because it reminds us that the state of California was founded on the water development and gold rush. I mean, we are at the core of -- and our water agency is at the core of what California was and is. We've got foothill agriculture, we've got foothill communities. This is a shot of the confluence of the American Sacramento. Water is really the strength of our economy here in Northern California, in this region. But it's also the strength of the economy everywhere. You know, down through the valley, agriculture, to Los Angeles as far as the eye can see, as far as the satellite can see. Water today is a zero-sum game. It's basically all used up. The Owens Valley, the Colorado River, the state water project, Central Valley project, they're all at capacity. It's interesting to remember that there was a deal struck when they approved the Central Valley project and the state water project. And the deal was that Southern California, these are export projects to Southern California, that the water supply to Southern California would always be secondary to the water deliveries of Northern California. They would only take the surplus of Northern California water. They would never disadvantage us in our economic development needs as far as water supply was concerned. And the sort of the evidence of the promise was the adoption of the Area of Origin Watershed Protection Acts in the legislature that say that. And the problem is, is that those promises are becoming terribly inconvenient for Southern California. There are very few water supplies in the state of California that aren't fully utilized. We happen to own one of them here in Placer County. The ecology of the Delta's in collapse because they've overdriven the water supplies out of the Delta for exports. They're talking about billions of dollars of infrastructure and restoration costs for the Delta, and literally economies are threatened. California has one overwhelmingly attribute, and that's its weather. It spawns two foundational industries, which is agriculture and urban development. And the urban development of Southern California is really threatened at this time. So the Delta solutions that are being developed pose serious risks to the economy, the environmental sustainability, and the quality of life of the greater Sacramento region. And of course, this is also Placer County, but we're trying to take a regional approach. We're trying to sort of all get together. This is a theme of the Regional Water Authority, so it's not just us. We're trying to make sure that this is broadly conceived. In case you doubt that our water's in play, here are some examples. In 2009, they passed SB seven, which requires 20 percent water conservation for all urban developers. Well, okay, not all urban water systems, because Los Angeles only has to do 5 percent, and San Francisco doesn't have to do any, and San Diego's 5 percent. But we in Northern California, we get to do 20 percent water conservation. In the same package, they passed a bill forming the Delta Stewardship Council, which is responsible to put together a Delta Plan to solve the problems of the Delta. The Bay Delta Conservation Plan, this is actually an effort to solve the physical delivery structure problems of the Delta and incorporate it into a conservation plan, an NCCP, very similar to the Placer County Conservation Plan, and that that would be incorporated into the Delta Stewardship Plan, Delta Plan. The State Water Resource Control Board was asked by the legislature to give an opinion on how much water they thought that the Delta needed, and they thought that 75 percent of unimpaired outflow was the right answer. If we had to release 75 percent of the inflow into our reservoirs and let it bypass the reservoirs, we'd have no water supply to meet our requirements in here. But it doesn't matter. That's what they want. Federal legislation, 1837, is just an example that even the federal government's involved in trying to figure out what should happen to our water supply. And finally, there's an $11 billion bond issue that unless there's a move to change, it'll be on the November 2012 ballot, the purpose of which is primarily to fund the restoration of the Delta. So kind of stepping down these, the Delta Plan, the first thing to know is about the geographic coverage. So the authorizing legislation gave the Delta Stewardship Council authority over the legal Delta. But they quickly decided that everything upstream of the Delta watershed affected what happened in the Delta, and everything that happened in the export areas in the Delta also affected the Delta. And so they decided that rather than be limited to the geographic legal Delta, that this is the area over which they should exercise their jurisdiction. I mean, the potential is, is that they could decide that a development project would take more water out of the river and put more wastewater into the streams, and that that should affect the Delta, and that your potential current jurisdiction should be usurped by the Delta Stewardship Council, and that they should have jurisdiction over land use authority. They're also talking about impinging water rights, restricting upstream water rights, fees on diverters. Last year, there was a bill introduced in legislature. It was withdrawn, but nevertheless, it proposed a $100 per acre foot fee on all urban water users in California to fund the whole Delta operation and everything that they need to do. And the flow proposals that I mentioned, the 75 percent unimpaired flow, it would end up in this Delta Plan, would have devastating impacts. The Bay Delta Conservation Plan, again, this is really the export interests forming a joint powers authority to put together this plan. It's proposing twin 33-foot diameter tunnels from Cortland to Tracy. And what worries us about this is, I mean, Southern California needs a reliable water supply too. The problem is, is that this takes them out of the Delta equation. Right now, the exports have to worry about the shape of the Delta because water has to come through the Delta to get to their pumps. This would move their diversion point upstream of the Delta and take them out of the equation. How nice for them. Federal legislation, this is currently in the works. It would void recent biological opinions for salmon and smelt, because they don't like them. It would reset the requirements for the state and federal projects to an agreement that was reached in 94. Significant changes to CBPIA, repeal an agreement, a San Joaquin River settlement agreement, and preempt state law. Nothing like being bold. Nobody's ever -- there's no federal preemption of state water law yet been passed by the federal government, but they're proposing it on water in our region. This is interesting, though. Tom Birmingham, the manager of Westland's Water District, was quoted in the hearings on 1837, says, "What have the upstream water users given up? Let's ask other people to do something." Remember the deal, right? The deal is, they get the surplus, right? They don't like the deal. Congressman Jim Costa, I'd like to know where the folks in Sacramento River Basin are giving up their fair share. Who pays? Sacramento region's water resources are at risk. We spent -- PCWA spent years negotiating a water form agreement to make sure that the Lower American River was protected and that we had, could take an adequate water supply to meet the development needs in our region. You know, the co-equal objectives that they're talking about in the Delta, we had co-equal objectives that we approved back in 2000, and it would be threatened because the water supplies wouldn't be available. Folsom Lake levels would be reduced, more unfair regulatory and legislative requirements undermining their provision protection, increased conservation demands, the fees that I was talking about, $100 an acre foot for urban, 20 for ag. We're worried that our future looks like this. This is Folsom Lake, empty. And so the point is, is that we need a regional alliance on water resources. The RWA, the Northern California Water Authority, SECOG, the cities and counties of the region, the business interests, environmental interests, labor, and others, need to have a united theme. And things seem to be coming together pretty well. I don't know if anyone saw the article in the Business Journal. We're beginning to get a little press, and that's kind of what we need to do. That's the whole point of making the presentation, letting people know what's happening here. And so what we're asking folks to do is to adopt a set of principles. So we didn't quite get this done in time to include it on your agenda today for your action, but we would ask you to perhaps consider adopting a resolution similar to the one that PCWA adopted. And I think that the Resolution 1131 ended up in your agenda. It's to ask that as the Delta Plan is being developed by the Delta Stewardship Council, that they honor existing water rights and area of origin protections, that upstream stakeholders be included in the development of the plan, that they do not preempt the authority and responsibilities of city counties and water districts, that be based on sound science, that the beneficiary pays principle be adhered to, that they not shift negative economic and environmental impacts to upstream areas. I think that's it. So let's just call to arms to the extent that you'd like to get involved.
Supervisor Yuler.
Under the $11 billion water bond proposal that's being put forward, how much of that is proposed for new surface storage?
The water bond started out, as I said, with a -- the heart of it is money for restoration of the Delta. But the reality of state politics is, you've got to make it a big enough Christmas tree to get everybody involved. And so for a lot of the Northern California Republicans, sites reservoir is the thing that they want. And so there's money in, I don't know how much, but there's money to study doing a site's reservoir. The problem is, is it's money for study. Sites reservoir is a bad project. And even the proponents of the project say, "Well, this is a project that'll allow you to take water in wet years and put it in storage so that when you need it for the Delta in dry years, you'll have this sites reservoir storage you use to meet your Delta requirements in dry years, and you won't need to take our water supply that we use on a regular, every-year basis." So that's the sites reservoir plan. Problem is, is that the environmental community, the Delta, the people working on the Delta, want water to go down the Yolo Bypass every year. And so in the wet years, when there might be water to put in sites reservoir, the environmentalists want it to go down the Yolo Bypass, which is fine. I mean, it might be great to increase habitat within the Delta by flooding the Yolo Bypass. The point is, is that they're never going to get storage. They've got a promise of maybe they'll get storage. So you ask, "How much water's for storage?" I don't think there's any water to build storage.
Dollars.
Dollars. They don't need to study storage. I think it's a red herring, but they managed to pull in a lot of Northern California support, got over their two-thirds, put this thing on the ballot.
And do we have, in terms of what, in wet years, for instance, what does flow from areas of origin out to the ocean that could be captured? Do we have estimates of where, if that water was to be captured, how much of the existing Delta concerns might be met?
That's a different question. The question you ask is, is there water, if we could store it, to solve the problem? And there probably is, because there's a whole lot of water in really wet years. The problem is that there aren't a lot of good reservoir sites left in California that haven't already been developed. And the political and environmental dynamic in this state is such that I just don't think that you can build a major new reservoir. I think it's just high in the sky. The best one that was on the table was the Auburn Dam, and the Bureau of Reclamation, which held the water rights, lost their water rights two years ago because of inaction on the project. So in terms of anybody being able to move forward with a project, that project is now all the way back to step one, when it used to be at least at step two, you know, or three. So, you know, so is there water in wet years to solve the problem? Yeah. Is it practical to build it? I don't think so. I'm probably not supposed to say that.
I note, Holly, that you wrote the memo on this. Was there anything additionally that you would like to add during the presentation?
The only, Holly Hines in County Executive Office, the only thing I'd add is, there has been a request for a resolution, and we'd be happy to bring a resolution back supporting those principles at the next agenda, should you so desire.
And I would be happy to have further discussions with the county, either publicly or privately, as to what that resolution would be specifically, and how it relates to our positions at the county as compared potentially with PCWA's positions.
May I add on that? There was a lot of conversation about what's in the resolution, and there were a lot of people that wanted more, like using the money that they promised for storage, to do storage, lots of things. And ultimately, what we decided was best for the region is if everybody could adopt something that was as similar as possible so that we were all on the same page, which meant that it's pretty baseline, pretty lowest common denominator, pretty vanilla. Although they're all important principles, they're not real specific. And so to the extent that you could be close, would be helpful.
Holly, did you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that really sums it up. And really, the resolution that was approved by PCWA really just looks at those very core principles and working cooperatively in a regional framework.
Okay. I see that we have Director Jarvis here today. Was there anything that you wanted to add to this discussion? Thank you. Please come forward.
Yes. Good morning, members of the Board. Hi, my name's Lowell Jarvis. I'm a director with Placer County Water Agency. I think Ina did a great job with the presentation. That's pretty much similar presentation that will be delivered to all the members of the Regional Water Authority. I'd just like to step back and mention that in 2009, there really was a flood of bills that came through the Sacramento Legislature. They started in April. They changed the bill number. They changed the bill contents. They went past the normal deadline of September of '09 to pass bills. They went to the seventh extraordinary session in November to pass some bills that, well, what you read on Sunday wasn't the same thing that you read on Tuesday. It really was a shell game of content and My understanding is that there are interests south of the Delta that have full-time lobbyists working on Capitol Mall, working the legislature every, well, every day during session to change the water dynamic in the state of California. In 2009 was very, very busy year, 2010 wasn't that busy of a year. A lot of folks kind of geared up, like the mountain counties, they realized that there's a chance to really lose our water rights and the way we use water here in Northern California. So they, others have geared up with certain staffers to deal with the legislation. Well, it turns out that they changed, they sidestepped legislature, and then they went to the Delta Stewardship Council as the body really making changes to water law in California, or policy in California. Since February of 2011, there have been five drafts of this plan, the Delta Stewardship Plan, which will, they plan to have seven drafts of this same plan, which will eventually lead to an environmental impact report. This due, the final is due in December of this year. So it seems like, again, we're getting the bum's rush with these policies that aren't very clear, they're not very well-thought-out. One of the concepts is covered action. What exactly is a covered action in the plan? I've had a chance to read it, I made some comments. I think it's bad policy, and I really think we need to step up together as a region with the Regional Water Authority, Northern California Water, the mountain counties. We all need to stand together to make sure that our rights are protected with water. So thank you very much. Resolution will be fine.
Thank you. I note, Mr. LeBeuf has a comment.
I'm a little unclear. I think the suggestion from representatives of PCWA is that perhaps the Board would consider a resolution that is substantially, if not identical in form, to the item that appears on page 11 and 12. The County Exec's Office said they could bring it back. I heard one supervisor indicated they'd be willing to work on the language. Is there a direction or sense of direction from the Board that they want the resolution to come back, and is there a sense of direction that you want, what form you want? We're not going to be able to negotiate this with five supervisors and can be consistent with the Brown Act, so I'm just sort of trying to get some idea of where we're headed. I have this cloud in my head that somebody's going to want to work on this paragraph, someone's going to work on that paragraph, and I just want to know where we're headed. Because I think I'll be talking to Holly about it.
I think it'd be fair to bring the PCWA resolution to our Board for discussion, and if any Board members have any concerns about it, we can address it when it's an agendized item.
Is that enough direction for you? Oh, absolutely. Thank you very much. Thank you. I know I wanted to thank you for coming today and giving the presentation. I'd also like to take this opportunity to ask you to come back at a date yet to be determined, to give a presentation and have a discussion on PCWA's County Master Plan, particularly with a focus on the east end of the county, PCWA, even though I think most people don't realize it does have a presence in the Tahoe Basin, and then also looking at what your vision is for the future in the west end of the county, in the far west end of the county, or south Placer. Sorry, I think east and west, everyone else talks about south Placer. So we'll have some discussion on that, but we would love to, I at least would love to have you come back and give us a presentation on that, touching possibly as well on the work that the ZAC3 group has been doing up in the Meta Vista, Applegate, Colfax area.
We'd be happy to do it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, thank you.
The Board will return to closed session to take up the remainder of the litigation items on page three, item 10 of its agenda.